Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for February the 18th, 2013. As a reminder, for those of you in the audience, we would appreciate it if you have a mobile device that you will put it on silence or vibrate during the meeting. This is, and as a reminder, this is a live broadcast of our Commissioners' meeting. We begin our meetings with our presentation of colors, and we are happy to welcome Girl Scout Troop 2534 from New Life Baptist Church. Please rise.
Now, please join me in the predigitation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as God. Color God may be dismissed. You may be seated.
Actually, if I can ask you to remain standing, I'm sorry. At this time, I would invite Senior Pastor Andy Langford from Central United Methodist Church in downtown Concord to deliver our invocation. Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of our congregation and the citizens of this county, thank you very much for your leadership of these people. Let us pray. Almighty God, throughout the Scriptures and throughout the ages, you have raised up women and men to lead your people, to guide us in places we yearn to go but do not yet know the way. Ask this evening that you bless these county Commissioners who love your people, who walk with us, who feel our pain, who share our joys, who dream our dreams, and strive to accompany us in our common goal. By your fire, with your spirit, embolden and commission them and us to serve your people and to bring glory to your name. We offer this prayer in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
And also ask at this time if you would join me in a moment of silence. Robert McClary became a county Commissioner on March the 3rd of 1969, and he served seven years as a county Commissioner. And I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence for his passing and for the thoughts and feelings of his family as they proceed through this time in their lives. So please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you all. At this time, I would ask for our very able Girl Scout members to please come forward. Ladies, you may need to pull that micro-- come on, all the way up, all the way up. We may have to pull that microphone down. I have to pull it down when I use that one. So how about tell me what your name is?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, what school do you go to, dear?
Jackson Park Elementary School.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
What is the best thing about being a Girl Scout?
Eating snacks and have fun.
Thank you very much. If you will go over to Commissioner White, he has a pen for you. Hello, dear. What's your name?
Uriah.
Uriah, what school do you go to?
Jackson Park Elementary.
And what grade are you in?
First.
First grade. And what do you like best about being a Girl Scout?
Holding the American flag.
And you did an excellent job of that tonight. Thank you. Hello, dear.
Shania Davis.
And what school do you go to?
Cochrane Well.
And what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. And what do you like best about being a Girl Scout?
Um, making stuff.
Making stuff. That's a great answer. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate all of you young ladies presenting the flags for us. Commissioners, the first item that we have is approval or correction of the minutes. You have before you in your agenda a number of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I've accepted a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have the approval of the agenda. There are a few changes to the agenda which you have. So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We always like to start our meetings with our recognitions and presentations, and tonight we have Cabarrus Youth Council. Commissioner Meesmer, do you need to do any introductions for them? Okay. I think we have Seth here. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Hi, I'm Seth Bolenbecker. I'm a senior at Mount Pleasant High School, and I'm serving as the Youth Council's president for this year. The Cabarrus County Youth Council started out the year with a brand-new advisor. On the leadership team this year, I am serving as president, Ryan Himes as vice president, Casey Aldridge as secretary, and Harrison Reef as historian. An initial reorganization of committees and bylaw revision was completed in order to clear up a few loose ends and the new leadership. The council currently has 13 members and two new members being recommended this evening, bringing us to a total of 15. Hickory Ridge and Northwest Cabarrus High Schools have a single position open on the council, and we are currently accepting applications for these spots. There are now only three committees, the Recruitment and Application Committee, Communications Committee, and Education Committee. Early in the year, in order to learn more about local government's assistance to the small businesses in our county, the council decided to visit the incubator beginning farming program at the Lomax facility. We also toured the Clearwater Studios art gallery and were educated about Concord's effort to grow the creative community. Obtaining the state of North Carolina Youth Council charter has been one of the council's main objectives for this year. The council was represented at the Leadership Conference in Winston-Salem a few weeks ago and will be attending the Youth Legislative Assembly in March and possibly the annual meeting in May. Once all attendees, or once all attendances are completed, the council will be able to submit an application and ask for approval in the annual conference in May. Currently, the council is working with community organizations to promote better nutrition and availability of choices in the school meals as a response to a major issue the council decided to, and identified at our retreat. Several members attended the part of the Food Council Policies Retreat on February 2nd to coordinate efforts, our groups, in return to nutrition in schools. Another main issue we decided to focus on is the apathy towards education amongst middle and high school students in our county. The Youth Council is actively assessing existing mentor programs and creating proposals for further programming that will address the lack of interest in school. New leadership roles will be elected at the end of May, and applicants will be interviewed to replace the current senior representatives from their respective high schools. We would like to extend our gratitude for your continued support of our council, and I will be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Do you want to add anything?
Well, as everyone knows, I've been very involved with the Youth Council from the beginning, and I've been very proud of the Youth Council and all they've accomplished, and they show a lot of initiative. And, I mean, I know I'm young myself, but they're right behind me, so they'll be taking my spot in a few years. But I appreciate all you guys do and all the efforts you put in. And it would be nice if each one of the council members would come up and introduce themselves and tell us what high school you represent.
Hi, my name is Michael Walker, and I currently attend Coxmouth High School.
Hello, my name is Leslie Profeli, and I go Jane Robinson.
Hello, my name is Gatil Amakon, and I go to early college high school.
Hello, my name's Casey Aldridge, and I go to Concord High School.
Hello, my name's Cooper McCauley, and I currently go to Central Cabarrus High School.
Hi, my name's Harrison Allen, and I go to Mount Pleasant High School.
Hi, my name is Ryan Himes, and I go to Central Cabarrus High School.
Good evening, my name is Harrison Reef, and I go to Concord High School.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Larson, and I go to Coxmouth High School.
Hi, my name's Eric Taylor, I go to Covenant Classical School.
I do want to recognize Shannon Johnson, who is the staff member that works with the Youth Council.
Yes, it's a pleasure. They're so wonderful. So it's been so fun this year, and they're really going to make some amazing accomplishments. I think by the end of the year, you'll be surprised. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, we welcome all of you here tonight, and we appreciate you coming. Next, we have Dennis Testerman to come up. Dennis, are you going to recognize the Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Conservation Contest winners? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate this opportunity. We've been doing conservation education contests for almost the entire time that we've existed as a single county district. That will be 50 years this coming August, and our longest-running contest is our public speaking contest. I wanted to start out, I guess, with the youngest grade and move upward those. So one of our more recent contests is our poster contest. This year was our 22nd annual contest. We had almost 500 students participate in that contest, and we have the, that is in the 3rd through 6th grades. I would just back up a second and say that we had a common theme for all these contests this year, and the theme was water, the cycle of life, a topic near and dear to our hearts in a county that's very challenged with limited water resources and trying to meet demands of a growing population and a growing economy. So, and third place, or in first place in the 3rd grade contest was Elijah Crisco, and I have no idea who's here tonight and who's not. It looks like Elijah is here.
Yeah, so if you're here and your name is called, please come forward.
And then, in the 4th grade, Laney Gragg. Both of these students are from Jackson Park Elementary School, a school that's already been well-represented here tonight. They are learning a lot about leadership, obviously, as well as water and conservation. In 5th grade, Abigail Brewer from Patriots Elementary. I don't think Abigail was able to be with us. And in 6th grade, Caroline Beers from Harris Road Middle. And Caroline's here. And then, in our annual essay contest, which has been running for 23 years, we had over 300 students participate in that contest, and the first-place winner this year is Rosalind Diffenbach. And we started, two years ago, our state association started a computer-designed slideshow contest also in the 6th grade, so this is our second annual contest in that arena. Last year, the, our first time out, that student went all the way to win the state contest, and we'll see how we do this year on that. From the same school, Harris Road Middle School, Madeline Barfield. Doesn't look like she was able to be with us. And then, last but not least, the 45th Annual Public Speaking Contest, which is in the 7th and 8th grades. In the 7th grade, Hannah Moore from Concord Middle School. And in the 8th grade, Olivia Reese from Concord Middle School. So all these students have been recognized at receptions and award ceremonies at, our Conservation District has hosted. These winners and the ones that weren't able to be with us tonight, their representative entries will go to a regional contest that's being hosted by our sister district in Mecklenburg County next month, and then if they are first in that contest, they'll be going on to a state contest that's held in Raleigh in May. I would like also to recognize if there are any teachers that came tonight. I see a hand back there, thank you for that.
Stand up, please, so we can see.
And we obviously couldn't do it without the teachers' help. And then, I see some parents out there, so would you please stand up as well? Some of these, most of these are not young enough to drive, so they wouldn't even be here tonight without the help of parents. Thank you all very much for that. And I neglected to say, I think, in the annual public speaking contest, we had almost 400 entries in that, so all told, we had 1,200 students participating in contest. I would also, as, could have done this as a segue on the front end, and it looks like Seth has already left, but Seth won our public speaking contest, I believe, in the 8th grade level several years ago. So another example of how this leadership thing just sort of carries on through the grade levels. We thank you so much for your all's support. I know, and I'll put myself on the spot here, I know Commissioner Burge, we enlisted him as a judge and other folks from the community, and others of you have participated in that way in the past, and we thank you for your financial support and your support with your time and interest.
We appreciate all of you, and thank you very much, Dennis, and thank you to the students who, and their teachers, who work hard to make sure that conservation is on their minds.
One question for you, Mr. Testerman, is if the students don't mind, is can you get their posters and their statement, or their essays, and get, so we can get them posted on the website as recognition?
We've been working, as recently as today, with our communications and outreach manager, and your clerk has been helping out in that regard a little bit, I think, as well, so yes, there are plans for that.
And also, when I was looking at the website, it appears that Mrs. Love, Ms. Love was, there was a YouTube of Ms. Love doing her presentation, possibly?
That was from last year.
Last year, yes. Okay. If there's anything, if the parents, if it's okay with the parents, I think it would be nice to have them recognized, because I certainly would like to see the essay, the top place, the top-placing essays, to see what's on there. But if you could, if that would be okay with the parents, I'd ask that get put on our website.
They have a wonderful message for our community, and we really do try in every way we can to get that word out so that a broader audience can benefit from that, and we're at work on that, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you for that request.
Thank you all very much. Well, the next one is kind of, it's a bit bittersweet, let me put it that way, because I'd like to ask for David Hampton to come up, please, for recognition. And our county manager would like to recognize David's service.
As our chairperson just stated, this is a bittersweet occasion, but it does give me great honor to be the one to stand here and present this to David, along with Commissioner White. On February 22nd of this year, John David Hampton, David Hampton, as we all know him, will be retiring after 31 years of service with the Cabarrus County EMS Service. David actually started in Cabarrus. He's a graduate of Northwest Cabarrus, he's a graduate of the paramedic training program with RCCC, he's a graduate of EMS management program with the University of North Carolina Charlotte. He's also a certified tactical EMT with the Uniformed Services with the University of Health Sciences and also the United States Parks Police. David started in the EMS business in 1976. After five years of serving with an ambulance service in Rowan County, we were lucky enough to bring him to Cabarrus County. And as I said before, he's been here for 31 years, and he is currently retiring. He's served as just about every position in the department, coming up through the ranks, and then now he is retiring as the EMS director. While at Cabarrus County, again, David has served as an EMT, or emergency medical technician, he's an intermediate emergency medical technician, a paramedic, EMT, a paramedic crew chief, an infection control officer, relief supervisor, training officer, assistant director, and again, as I stated, as the director, and is currently responsible for all of the EMS operations in Cabarrus County. He developed and was team leader for the Cabarrus County EMS Special Tactical Operations, Response Medics, and Special Event Coverage. He was the first on-the-track paramedic at Charlotte Motor Speedway and developed the Cabarrus County EMS Track Team. Not only was the first, he served as the lead paramedic on the track for over 10 years. He was also the first SWAT medic in Cabarrus County, and served 15 years as a tactical medic for the Kannapolis Police Department's SRT, and also developed that initial Cabarrus County EMS Tactical Medical Support Program. And in his spare time, David also worked with CMC Northeast as the Special Events Coordinator, and he did that for 16 years. And he was the one that initially set up this program that has continued to be involved in venue coordination and event setup coverage. David, during his time here, he has won several awards, Central Line of Council of Governments' Region F EMT of the Year, the Central Line of Council of Governments' Region F EMS Educator of the Year, and the Kannapolis Police Department Citation for Meritorious Actions. And as you can see, all of his fellow, or a lot of his fellow workers are here, and I'm sure a lot of them are on telephone, watching on television, as they respect David, and I know they're upset that he's leaving as well. He's an excellent paramedic, he's an excellent EMS director, he's an excellent ambassador and employee for Cabarrus County Government, and he's a good friend, and we're going to miss him. And so I would invite you, after the presentation, to come Thursday afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00, 4:00 to 6:00, right, in our multipurpose room to pass on your good wishes. So with that, David, congratulations. Thank you, Lori, congratulations for putting up with him. Now you're getting hold, right?
David, it is with honor to give you this clock for your recognition service. It takes a lot of things to be a good leader, and one of them is to serve, and you've done that. You've done that admirably for 31 years, at the different events in the county. You've been there on the front line, showing the people what needs to be done, and teaching them how things will be done. You're going to miss your leadership, but we also are going to miss your vision. Thank you for the years. Thank you.
I would just like to say thanks to the board. I mean, the support that we've had here in the county with EMS and personally with me from the board through the years, county manager's office, Mike, Pam, Jonathan, their guidance, Mike keeping me under control when he needed to, and I just want to thank them. Thank the people I work with. I mean, you know, EMS is the people that's out on the street running the calls, and we've got some of the best everywhere that you'll find anywhere. And I want to thank Alan. Alan's been my assistant for 10 years now, I guess, and will be moving on to director. And I know with him being in charge that, you know, we'll continue and continue to grow. And I want to thank my wife Lori again, my two daughters Brittany and Brandy, for their support. Being in EMS is kind of a tough job, but I think being a family member can be even tougher at times, and they've always stood by me. And I want to thank them for that. With that, thank you.
We do all appreciate you and everything you've done. And next, we want to call on John Cox, who is here to present an award to our, to recognize and present an award to our county manager.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. The Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce at its annual meeting in January gives awards for Small Business of the Year and several other things. This year, we created an award that we felt was representative of the business community's feelings and appreciation and joy in the service that executive-level leadership is being distributed, is being exhibited by our county manager, by the city manager of Kannapolis and the city manager of Concord. They evidence it in their own ways and their own jurisdictions, but they certainly are distinguishing themselves in the way in which they work together to serve you and to serve us. And so for that reason, we created a brand-new award that was presented to those gentlemen back in January. It's so important that we've asked our chairman, Tom Earnhardt, if he would come and make that presentation tonight.
Thank you very much. Mike, on behalf of the Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce, I present this Executive-Level Leadership Award. It's such a privilege. You've done outstanding work, and thank you for your excellence in leadership. Thank you for thinking of all the citizens of Cabarrus County and all the work that you do there, and especially the business community.
Okay, next, we have informal public comments. I have three speakers, three cards tonight. First up, Price Crutchfield.
Hello, Price Crutchfield here. Mike Downs, county manager, you disappointed me, sir. I thought you were for my freedom of expression. You're not. You're for freedom of expression, you're just not for my freedom of expression. You're like they are at City Council. I signed over there to speak out, the mayor, "Oh, no, you can't do this, you can't do that." Now you're a City Council wannabe, sir. You're not for my freedom of speech. I had public information that that nice lady over there said she put on the computer, and you said, "Oh, no." Well, I was allowed to give it to my fellow citizens, so if they can read it, why can't others on the computer read it? It's about homeland security. It's public information, and you wouldn't let me present it on the computer that I had to help pay for. With the money I have to pay Cabarrus County in tax, you should be absolutely ashamed of yourself. Now, we got that over with. Scott Newell with the Concord Police, he's captain on the Concord Police Force, been there a long time. He lied under oath on me in court to Judge Hamby. He told Judge Hamby, under oath, that I came into, here's what he said, "Your Honor," I quote, "He's come into restaurants and harassed my family. I've never harassed anybody's family, period, in any restaurants." He lied under oath, and he was allowed to get away with it. So the only thing that I can construe is, we've got a police department that can lie under oath and a court that don't mind listening to them lie under oath. That's ridiculous. This character called me names first. We were by ourselves, there were no families, no children, just us, two grown men by themselves. He called me a name. He was expressing his right to be heard. He certainly didn't get arrested for it, and he never will. I don't know of any police officer in the United States of America who's ever been arrested for saying any cuss words or anything that might be construed in that area, demeaning, I just don't know of any that's ever been arrested for cussing on the sidewalk. I used one expletive one time in my communication, attached no threat to it, and I was charged with cussing on the sidewalk, and I had to pay 360 bucks. Didn't mind paying the fine, because the law's the law. But the only problem is, Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department broke the law and lied under oath to Judge Hamby to get the 360 bucks out of me. I can't afford that kind of money. I'm just trailer trash. But again, Mr. County Manager, you just, you just, I'm bewildered by your actions, sir. You allow me to disseminate material to fellow citizens, but you won't allow me to put it on the computer. You just want a limit, you want to shorten, condense, and abridge. You remind me of those folks over there at City Council. You're a City Council wannabe. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Next, I have Judy Gray.
My name is Judy Gray, spelled J-U-D-Y, G-R-E-Y. I have 33 years of experience of teaching in Cabarrus County. I've taught in Charleston, I've taught in Columbia, South Carolina. I have a master's degree in education, I have a degree in special ed and a degree in elementary education. So I'm educated, I've been in the school systems, I know how the school systems operate. I know what failures the school systems have been in list, initiating in the school systems in the last 10 to 12 years, and the lack of meat, quote, "meat." in the last 10 to 12 years and the lack of meat, quote, meat foundations of teaching in logical, sequential, meaningful teaching to the students in this Cabarrus County schools. The communist sympathizers and leaders opposition in this community strip outspoken citizens who oppose their agenda of all support and status in this community. Citizens like myself and my deceased husband, my daughter, son-in-law, have been abused and accused falsely of crimes they never committed by a corrupt and communist sheriff's department. Eventually, such citizens end up dead, as did my husband. We are stripped of any influence in this community and isolated by the majority of the communist citizens of this county and state so they can make us disappear or inflict health problems on us through our food and medications. I know I have been falsely medicated by professionals so I will not be a voice in this community. The political leaders, the school system leaders, especially Marion Bish, Jesse Blackwelder, Dr. Winkler, and Scott Paget, as well as many others I do not have time to mention, have abused their authority in this school system and have been nothing but dictators, quote, dictators in their position and control freaks. I do not have time to name everybody. The court system is corrupt. The communist leaders opposition of authority in this community use criminals and misuse, misuse the poor to terrorize and intimidate us who speak out to instill fear in the citizens who are observant and aware of what's going on in this community. Children are being observed, and those children who are being independent thinkers, lovers of liberties, or whose parents seem a threat to this community are being not educated and are not being treated fairly in the school system. They're creating unstable environment in the school system for these children. They are not teaching them logically and sequential curriculum in this school system. Children who can be manipulated and controlled by such communist and dictatorship are in positions and authorities to which they are not mentally and intellectually able to perform. All this is to have supreme control over all aspects of the citizens and the children of Cabarrus County. Enclosing the international's control and power over the native-born citizens of Cabarrus County have been a disgrace to the people. A voice is concerned because my life, the life of my daughter, my son-in-law, and grandsons are in danger. I refuse to sit by and be silent while the internationalists slowly phase out the born-again Christians and people of this community who cannot be controlled. The intent and agenda of these internationalists is to destroy all moral decency and Christian influence in this community and state. My name is Judy Gray, J-U-D-Y-G-R-E-Y. May God protect the born-again Christians of this county who elevate the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next, I have Robert Simmons. Welcome, Mr. Simmons.
Well, I've got some tough acts to follow here. I came in here six months ago and filed a complaint against the Department of Social Services for discrimination. I had been misinformed, refused help, and even lied to to keep me from getting medical treatment. After I filed that complaint, I was allowed to go on a program called CCP. In CCP, they, they're limited in what they can do. They did find out that I had a life-threatening problem with a blob of plaque in my neck. I thought it was a blood clot, but it seems to be a clot, a plaque, but they couldn't do anything about it, or they said they couldn't. And I had some other problems where the people that they sent me to, and one of those problems was at a sleep center, and I documented it so that they would see what really happened. And I brought that to them. When I brought that to them, they immediately told me that I was terminated, and unless I signed a statement, basically given up my First Amendment rights, not being able to complain about any of the medical providers that I was sent to, I couldn't get back on the program. Well, in regards to healthcare, you have to be able to keep your First Amendment rights because over 100,000 people a year die in hospitals because of mistakes like wrong medicine, wrong blood. Took care of both my parents before they died, and I remember several times that I had to actually fight with doctors to make them do the right thing in regards to treating my parents, otherwise they would have harmed them. In fact, one time, my mother was, lost her foot had I not stood up and fought with these doctors for many hours to make them do what another doctor had done that had helped her previously. So anyway, I lost CCP, they would not talk to me about it, they would not communicate with me about it. They said I didn't follow a plan of action. So after a couple, three months of fighting with them trying to get it back, I went ahead and applied for Medicaid. Something really interesting happened in Medicaid. I do not want disability, I want to go back to work, even though I'm 59 years of age and I could use a check, I would rather earn that check. So I told them I did not want to be on disability, I just wanted Medicaid. However, the people at the Department of Social Services, they kind of pulled a fast one on me. They told me that they did not know whether or not I had to be on disability or not to get Medicaid. And they arranged for me to have a special medical examination. I thought it was they were going to check and see how badly I was injured so I could get the medical treatment I need to live, because I'm going to die without it. Instead, they had set me up for a under-the-table psychiatric evaluation. Now, I am not crazy. I am a sick man, I am very angry and frustrated, but if anyone has a conversation with me, they will see that I am a very sane and intelligent person. Anyway, when I told them that I wasn't certain that I could do that, they told me that I would have my claim denied immediately if I did not go to that, have the psychiatric evaluation. I thought about it, but unfortunately, I do not wish to give up my Second Amendment rights, and that's what happens when you have a psychiatric evaluation. So I denied it. I got told four times that they would deny my claim. What's really interesting is I never applied for disability, and no one can answer that one question, do I have to go on disability to get Medicaid in this state? No one knows the actual true answer. I keep hearing conflicting stories from the Department of Social Services. I would like to have that answer in writing, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, just for the record, I may sue the Department of Social Services. This is the reason why I came up here to tell you, okay?
Thank you. Hey, next, old business, we have, at this time, we don't have anything on our agenda for old biscuit, old business, excuse me. Next, we have the consent agenda. And Commissioners, I do want to point out, I don't know if Commissioner White wants to point out item number eight, which is about the community read. Mr. Penumbra's 24-Hour Bookstore by Robin Sloan will be the community read in the spring of 2014. It's through four different counties that will be participating in that. I think, do you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to make certain that, for the community to get geared up, because it was an awesome presentation for the last community book read and the time before that. We get so much out of it, I think it's very important that we get a lot of input, and that is going to be, that's in the planning stages, or will be in the planning stages for the spring of 2014, Mr. Penumbra's 24-Hour Bookstore. So get it online, get it on your Kindle or on your reading device, because if you buy a hardback, it does glow in the dark. So anyway, I think it's a great opportunity, and I also wanted to bring attention to the fact that the Cabarrus Rotary Club is looking to, under F1, is wanting to build or have a, build a disc golf course out at Frank Lisk Park, so that's going to be in the works as well.
Thank you very much. Hey, Commissioners, we have the consent agenda before you. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have new business. First up, we have from finance, resolution relating to refinancing of prior general obligation bonds for schools and public improvements, and we need to have a public hearing. Welcome in.
Tonight, we'd like to talk about this item relating to refinancing prior GO bonds that related to the schools and public improvements, the series 2005 and 2006. It's come to our attention that the circumstances are ripe for us to save money by refunding these bonds. Of course, if the market does not present that opportunity, we won't do it, but we have every expectation that it will. And our bond counsel is here, our underwriters and other folks, if you have any questions about this refunding.
Hey, Commissioners, are there any questions concerning the refunding of the GO bonds? We talked about this at our work session a little bit.
When you're talking about refund, it's actually a refinance. Is that correct? Okay. And when, if we were to refinance at the anticipated rate of a little over 1%, we end up saving how much over the refinancing rate, or refinancing amount?
If the refinancing rate of 1.97, which is what we project it would be right now with the total cost, it's savings of 8.48% or, over the course of the term, $6.3 million.
Okay, when you say 8.34%?
8.48%.
8.48%. You are not saying that right now we have this loan at 10%?
No.
So it's, right now, the loan's at about 3...
Between 3 and 5%.
Right, but over the life of the loan, it's a savings of 8%, which is an actual dollar amount. How much is it again?
$6,316,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, we do need to schedule a public hearing, not call for one tonight, I apologize. Schedule a public hearing for our March 18 meeting. So Commissioners, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the resolution relating to refinancing of prior general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount up to $95,580,000, and to schedule the required public hearing for March the 18th, 2013.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, next, item number two, planning and development, 2013, 14 home consortium. And we do need to hold a public hearing for this one, so do you want to give us some information first?
This is the annual public hearing for the home program. That is a program that provides full housing rehab to eligible applicants. It is focused on elderly and disabled, and it is income-based, and it does have an extensive qualification process that requires deeds of trust and those type of things on the home. We are taking applications currently, so anybody that is interested may contact me for that. My number is 704-920-2142, and we'll be glad to take the information and try to qualify. Are there any questions?
How much money is being spent by the county if we hold a public hearing tonight on this?
About $300.
Hold a public hearing, ma'am?
$300.
Okay. No other money is being involved?
No, this is just the required public hearing. We have not technically made application yet, the application period has not opened up. And that is also a program where the money, whatever is given to the consortium is divided on a ratio basis. So I expect probably around $90,000 is what we got last year, and I would expect thereabouts or maybe a little less.
And so this money's coming from the federal government?
Correct.
Okay. And I know, as you stated, and it's here in our agenda packet, is that it's focused on the elderly and disabled.
Correct.
Was that the case last year?
That's always who we have marketed to. We cannot deny another qualified applicant if they come along, but traditionally, Cabarrus County has always marketed to elderly and disabled. Part of it's pretty effective, too, because we have, do have the Housing and Home Improvement Program and the weatherization programs and all of those programs, which are geared toward elderly, so we have access to that population as well as we get a lot of referrals from DSS.
Okay. So in the past, would you say all of the clients served were elderly and disabled, or 90% of them?
Probably about 90%. We've had a couple of families here and there with children or some unique situations, or in other cases, I think almost every other case that I can remember, either they had children or they were disabled.
Okay, so there's no way to single out the elderly and disabled recipients from...
No, there's not, but we don't get a tremendous amount of applications outside of that, typically because younger families have purchased the home and have debt on it, and so they don't have the equity in place. Typically, the elderly population has more equity in their home and have more chance of being eligible.
Okay. When these grants are approved or the people that receive them, is that work done under the supervision of the county, or how is that handled?
In the past, we have used consultants who do the work write-ups and do inspections for us. We used COG up until recently, we're using Hobbs Up Church currently. That is something that we can reevaluate each year. They go out, but they do the work write-ups for us, they analyze the lead reports and things like that, and do the work write-ups, set up the bids, do the inspections, and tell us when and how much we should pay at each level. That has been a pretty effective relationship. The people who do that have some specialized knowledge related to the grants and the requirements. Once we touch a house, we have to bring it to code, and then there are also some grant requirements that are very specialized to housing grants that they have that just not anybody would have. There are certain requirements with how things are recorded and all of that that they help us with, so we do use them for that purpose. We don't have staff at this point to carry out that function.
Right, and so typically, or historically, have we had local contractors, Cabarrus County folks, that have done the actual work?
We have had some. It is competitive bidding. We have marketed, we have had Man Construction, who is a local contractor. Lately, the ones that have been winning the bids are from Taylorsville and Troutman area, but we have about nine regular bidders, and three of them are from Cabarrus, four of them are from Cabarrus County.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have to take the low bidder?
Unless you can prove that they are not a responsible bidder for some reason. In my time doing this, I only remember once or twice where we didn't declare somebody the responsible bidder. If they are outside the cost estimate too far, you can reject that bid based on, it just doesn't make sense that they could do it for that amount. We did have a roof that we did that recently, but generally, that, it's a rare event. Most of them are pretty in line.
Can this grant be used on rental?
No, sir.
Okay.
It is only homeowners.
Now, how about this, so the program requires a 25% match?
That is correct. Cabarrus County, for the past few years, has provided the 25% match.
But you don't know what the grant's going to be yet?
No, we put in a projected amount each year, and I have been reducing that over time as the grant has been reducing over time. I've reduced the amount requested from the county. And that does not include the administrative portion, just the activity portion.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, we do need to have a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing concerning the 2013, 2014 home consortium grant, home consortium. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this program? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. The only thing we need to do tonight is to hold the public hearing, there's no other action, so, okay. Commissioners, this will come back to us when there is an amount identified. Next, we have also from planning and development, 2013, 14 weatherization and heating and air repair and replacement grant application.
Yes, and we did discuss this a little bit at your agenda meeting, and I did want to provide a little additional information on the program and how it's operated. Currently, the county, we have county staff that does the weatherization work itself. We have a local, we use local licensed HVAC contractors to do all of our HVAC contract as that is required license. We obviously are using, we're purchasing products locally with those funds to do the work. We do not do any bulk purchasing other than vents, which are kind of a specialized product that you can't get locally. We have approximately 40 clients on our waiting list, 23 are elderly and 10 are disabled. Again, tonight, we're just asking for permission to do the application. This does not bind us in any way, this is just the request for application approval. Are there questions?
You don't know what amount that'll be either, do you?
No, that one is, has varied a good bit over the past few years. I did pull that information since you did ask about it at the agenda session. We went back several years. The standard program, we, in 2008, got 116,000, 2009, got 108,000, 2010, got 111,000. The standard program, we, in 2008, got 116,000; 2009, got 108,000; 2010, got 111,000; 2011, we got 48,000; and 2012, we got 128,000. The 2011 dip was associated with stimulus money, because we had that at the same time. We did get one, almost 1.2 million in stimulus money, so that was, they reduced the funding that year. Right now, we are being told to plan with the current allocation, but that could likely be cut. The Heating and Air Repair and Replacement Program, in 2008, we got 28,000; 2009, we got 28,000; 2010, we got 56,000; 2011, we got 97,000; and 2012 was 105,000. Those increases that you see in that program, all that money comes from kind of the same pot. What they did was move some of it to the Heating and Air Repair and Replacement Program to work with the Aura stimulus money, because if you don't have a heating, a properly working heating and air system, the house cannot be weatherized. So that allowed flexibility in being able to fix the heating and air system prior to you being able to do the work.
Can this grant be used on rentals?
It can. It is not extremely common. I did not pull how many rentals are currently on the waitlist. I, off the top of my head, am aware of one on the waitlist. There may be more. But the landlord is required to pay $275 toward the program unless they, too, are qualified. What we have found in a lot of cases with our program is that it's not a traditional landlord situation. It's usually a family member allowing somebody to live in a unit that they own or something, and they really can't afford to keep it up like a traditional landlord. So if the, if that person, if the owner is also qualified by income for the program, then they do get to waive the fee, but other than that, they are required the $275.
And these are federal funds?
Yes, and I'm sorry, for the Heating and Air Repair and Replacement Program, you're required to pay 50% of the cost.
Okay.
Other questions?
So what is the process for this, you know, for a client to, to make an application? You know, if my air condition's not working, do I call you and say...
Correct. They call into the office. We collect a lot of information over the phone. The application is a little bit lengthy. Then we send it out to the applicant. They have to come back in with it, because we do have to get a copy of their ID to prove that they are who they say they are. And at that time, we process it all. If we can manage to do it in the office at that time, if they can bring an award letter, for example, so that we can verify their income, we do it right then and give them a letter before they walk out of the office telling them whether they are financially qualified. If we have to search a little bit and do a little more research, we send them out the letter when we get it, telling them they're either qualified or not qualified financially. There are two levels of qualification, though, for this program. Once you get financially qualified, we do have to come to the house and do an audit on it. There are factors at the house that could prevent somebody from getting service. If there's mold in the house, over a certain amount, obviously, everybody has a little mold in their house, but over a certain amount, we cannot touch the house because we can't, we don't want to seal it up any tighter and cause them problems. There are maybe possibly asbestos situations, things like that, that may cause us to either back away or get some other, give them some resources, maybe to get to, to maybe do something else before we get there. We can't do with knob and tube wiring, so there are some things like that that could prevent the work from being done. So once that audit is done and we've determined that there aren't any factors that would prevent the home from being done, then we proceed with the work.
Okay, do you know how many clients serve through this program or on the Energy Assistance Program?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that there is a huge correlation, because they are at Health or Human Services required to provide the, anybody who gets crisis assistance with our information. If you have had your unit done since 1994, you are not eligible, whether it's, no matter who's living there, it goes by the unit in that case. Unfortunately, years ago, the program was not as extensive as it is now, so there are units out there that probably really do need service again, because they didn't get much the first time compared to what they do now, but there is a date out there that cuts off.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to make a comment before we vote. I just do not feel this is the best way for the county government or federal money to be spent. You know, we, we have a society now that has a sense of entitlement to themselves, and I just can't imagine where the government can be involved in replacing air conditioning heaters for privately-owned homes. It just, it baffles me that the government can afford to, to provide these services whenever we're in the economic crisis that we're in.
Any other comments?
And just to further to say that, I mean, that's where, you know, I understand that there's, you know, situations in the community where people do need assistance and help, but that's where we, as a community, rely on churches and private organizations, and I feel that people are best served through that venue rather than through government and our public tax dollars.
Well, the sad part is that the federal government sends out $800 billion a year in grants to cities, counties, and states. Every dime of it's borrowed. That's almost the amount of money we're going in debt every year in this country. But we just got through approving three grants on the consent agenda, was for things that, you know, we didn't have to, we don't have to have them. And, and to keep some, you know, I don't have nothing against poor people. I don't approve of this myself, but I can't vote against it, because I just feel like it's something that the government's gonna do anyway.
Well, I can understand your, your predicament, that, and the statements you had, Commissioner Meesmer, the concern I have is that there are churches, there are people out there that might be in a position to do it. The problem is, they don't step forward to do it. And last year, I believe it is, we did not approve a grant, and one of the things I was interested in finding out is what organizations would step forward to fill in that gap, and there wasn't. And it's not as though we are improving homes to people that can afford their own air conditioning. It's, we're caught in a rock and a hard place, and as you see it on your end in helping out with the Department of Social Services, where people come in there that need help, and it's tough. And it's just, it would be nice that there was a group out there that could and would step forward and help out. They're just not there. And so I'm gonna be voting for this, but I certainly understand your, your statements, and I understand where we are. It's, when do you lend a helping hand, and when, when do you not? And it's kind of tough. It really is a tough decision to make, but I certainly understand your position. I just see that churches, organizations, contractors, don't do that, don't step forward, and that's the tough part.
I think what we turned down last year was stimulus money, wasn't it? $75,000?
Yes, sir.
And it was to...
This program still went on?
Yes, this is the standard program.
And I was not, if I, if you, if I, if you thought that I was saying this program wasn't this program, it was a program...
Stimulus money.
But it was a program to help with fixing up homes and helping homes with the idea, was there contractors? Were there tradesmen that would step in? If the county did not provide that service, would they step up and do it? In the legal profession, it's pro bono work that we do. There is work that I do for free, because the people couldn't afford those services, and I choose to do that because that's the right thing to do. I can't do it with all of my cases, otherwise I couldn't put food on my table. But in these trades professions, they haven't stepped up, and if they're not gonna step up to help out people that certainly cannot afford this, who will?
Well, I, I would be in support of this, and, and, you know, I view my role in this position as taking care of folks in Cabarrus County, which I don't have any control over the way the federal government spends their money. I would say that if I did, this might, might be one of the ways, I would say, is a good thing for folks that, that truly need the help, but to follow up on what Commissioner White said, there are people that step up, they just can't do it all. And, and we've got some great support organizations in this community through our churches, Cooperative Christian Ministry, United Way Agencies, that I think probably many of us support financially that do a lot in this area, and, and so if this can supplement what they're doing, we can't do it all, and certainly, they can't do it all either.
And again, the motion before us is to allow staff to apply, to go ahead and submit the grant application. This will come back to us for approval once she gets more information, but this particular one, there's a very short timeframe once they say go, and she, we want to make sure that this board does get the chance to review it. So the motion before us is to authorize staff to submit the annual weatherization and heating and air repair and replacement program grant, grant application.
I would make that motion if it hasn't already been made.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have appointments. We have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, JCPC, and Mark Bowles has applied as a member of the business community to complete an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2013. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is Cabarrus County Youth Council, and I know that I heard Copper was here, I think Eric was here tonight, too. So Cooper, sorry. Motion to appoint Cooper McCauley to the Cabarrus County Youth Council representing Central Cabarrus High School to fill a vacant term with a new expiration date of June 30th, 2013, and a motion to appoint John Eric Taylor to the Cabarrus County Youth Council representing the at-large Covenant Classical Position for an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2013.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I have a note that Victoria Layton was removed due to a schedule conflict, and since we're on this one, real quick, there are a few vacancies for this one. If I'm reading this correctly, and Commissioner Meesmer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, looks like J.M. Robinson has one, maybe Hickory Ridge has one, and there's another at-large. So there are a few vacancies still open on the Cabarrus County Youth Council. We encourage high school students to apply for those positions. And next, we have the Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks Commission. Let's see, a motion to reappoint John Parker and Tracy Broome to the Active Living in Parks Commission for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2016. A motion to appoint Michael Andrew Cooley to the Active Living in Parks Commission for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2013. Motion to remove one at-large seat and to replace it with a seat from, with a senior centers advisory council member, and a motion to remove Margaret Houston and Clara Swallows from the Active Living in Parks Commission roster and thank them for their service. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have reports, and Commissioners, you have a number of reports in your agenda packet, and let me go back to applications for county boards. We have a number of boards that need, need applicants, especially the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee and the Region F Aging Advisory Committee. We need folks that are interested in our adult population to apply for these boards. There are a number of vacancies on there, and we have gotten a special request to mention those, those particular boards and try to solicit some folks to apply for those. Next, we have updates from commission members, and I'll start, pass out to the Commissioners and manager. I enjoy serving on the Central Carolina Workforce Development Board, and these are the labor market information updates that we received at our meeting this past week. And I just always think that, for me, I think that's interesting information, so I just want to share that with you, front and back, gives you some information on unemployment insurance claims and labor force estimates for a number of surrounding counties and North Carolina as a whole, so I think that's interesting information. Commissioners, any other Commissioners that would like to report from any of the boards that you serve on?
Just a couple, couple of comments. Since our last meeting, attended the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees meeting, which was, was a combination of several things. It was the kickoff of their 50th anniversary, which they are celebrating this year. They began in 1963 with, I think, about 850 students. They had over 1,000 people there to form a 50 in the parking lot, which they made a picture of, and was quite a celebration, that also, at the same time, was the groundbreaking for their fire and emergency services training facility, which is certainly appropriate to mention, since Mike mentioned earlier that our folks had, many have participated in that, so that was a big event. They also recognized a $491,000 grant from the Gold Leaf Foundation and gave a very informative report about some computer-integrated machinery, machining, training that they're gonna be able to do. Was also able to attend their annual scholarship luncheon this past Friday, which was held in Salisbury. I think last year, it was here in Cabarrus County. That was quite inspirational to hear some of those scholarship recipients and hear about the work that they're doing at Rowan Cabarrus Community College, so I'm sure we'll hear more about that as the year goes on. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council had their legislative breakfast this past Friday morning, which was very well-attended, and it was certainly inspiration, inspirational to hear some of those service recipients come and talk about what kind of an effect that it had on some of these young people's lives, and had some of the organizations that administer those programs there to talk about what they do as well, so kudos to them.
Anyone else? Also want to share, I'm looking forward to a meeting next week with the Cabarrus Rowan MPO, which I serve on, and Jonathan is the chair of the staff group that meets, and I'm the chair, current chair of the elected body that meets, and we're gonna have a joint meeting with the new Department of Transportation Secretary. Tato is gonna be down in Cabarrus County, and we're looking forward to hearing from him and seeing what his vision will be for North Carolina Department of Transportation, so I'm looking forward to that meeting next week. If there are no other comments as far as our liaisons go, the next item is general comments by board members. Are there any general comments that anyone would like to share? I'm gonna give a shout-out again to the Cooperative Extension ladies that were here last month that were so kind to give us those cookies. I don't know how you guys did with mine, were scarfed up pretty quickly when I got home, and they were greatly appreciated, so any time those ladies would like to come back and provide cookies for us, I think we're all open for that, so.
I came home, I showed them to the kids, I went upstairs to change, and by the time I got down, I had crumbs. It's like the locust tit in the prairie.
That wasn't quite that, that bad, but I don't have three teenagers, or you have two teenagers at home, so I didn't have that problem quite so bad, but it was very nice of them to come, and I always appreciate the things that they do, so. At this time, Commissioners, we do need a motion to go into closed session to consult with the county attorney regarding pending litigation and to discuss the negotiation of real property as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, and 5.
So move.
And invite Jonathan Marshall to come into the meeting. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you all very much. We appreciate those of you in the audience that have stayed with us all evening. Good night.